Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining us. Today is the Board of County Commissioners Workshop, August 22nd, I'm sorry, August 2nd, 2022. Don't push it, right? And Roger will start off with the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we would like to present to you the second draft of the fiscal year 2223 budget. And at the end of that conversation, a conversation about distribution of the gas tax, as you, well, we'll talk about it when we get there and give the background. But so why don't we just get right into it, Pete? And Commissioners, if you have any questions, as Pete goes through this presentation, please feel free to interrupt and ask.
Thank you, Roger, and good afternoon, Commissioners. So we had the first draft of the continuation budget, June 21st. And these budgets, the first draft and the second draft, are all culmination of some of the workshops we've held the past year to get input from the Board, starting with our strategic planning session in February. The Board saw and approved the transportation priorities in February. In April, we came to you and got input on what assumptions we should input into this budget as we developed it. And then here we are today at the second draft. First, I'd like to, first off, I'd like to thank the Department Directors and Fiscal Managers, many of whom are here today for their hard work in developing this budget. So each year, they do a great job in putting their numbers together. So today, what we're going to talk about is kind of the, is the current status of the budget based on where we were June 21st. And with that, the operating changes from June, when in June 21st, we knew what the preliminary tax base assessment would be. The final comes out July 1st, and so we'll show you the changes between these two budgets based on that assessment. Some of the cost drivers for the budget, I'll show you five-year forecasts for the general fund and the unincorporated MSTU fund. Really, just one CIP capital improvement plan change. We're going to show you, you have your CIP in front of you, and you had it at the first workshop. It's heavily weighted toward transportation projects and utility projects. And then the upcoming timeline for your, for your budget hearings. And then the questions we'll ask at the, at the end. Do you agree with the status of the budget development as it stands? And is there anything else you'd like to see? Just to review a little bit, in April, when the Board met, to talk about budget assumptions, these were the main assumptions in developing this budget that the Board approved. And the first is, as always, is to present the continuation budget. So that's the cost to provide the exact same level of services of the next year as we do this year. So if you, if you mow the median four times a year this year, same level of service, you mow it four times next year. If that increase, if that cost increase is 10%, there's a 10% increase, there's an increase in your budget, but it's the same level of service that you're providing. Keep high priority projects on track, particularly with inflation and the cost increases we're seeing, particularly in the construction field. And to date, we have kept all of our projects on track. We have not deferred projects based on current conditions. And then keep up with growth. You know, this area has always been fast-growing. It continues to grow very quickly. And with that, service demand increases, and we have to add new positions and competitive pay, and there's a number of new positions in this budget, as we talked about in June. Just to review, so we're talking mostly today about the general fund budget, which is the county's single largest budget, about $580 million now. And then the unincorporated MSTU, which provides, services provided to the unincorporated areas. Just to review real briefly, this is the breakout of the general fund budget. So you can see that there's a lot of spending in this budget that is not directly controlled by the Board of County Commissioners. The sheriff, as always, is the largest budget in the general fund. And between the sheriff and constitutional budgets and court system, that's 56% of the spending in the general fund. Your county, your county departments that are in general fund make up 29%. And then the remaining 15% is made up of either state mandates or what could be considered joint costs. Major maintenance is a, is a good example of that. We maintain all of the county buildings and all of the buildings for the constitutional offices. I'll come back to this, but just wanted to show, this is, this is the general fund. You're familiar with this slide, millage 3.8623. And we'll come back, and I'll go into these numbers in detail. But as you can see, you have a continuation surplus. In June, the Board asked us to come back with a, to model a 5% pay adjustment beginning October 1st. And you can see after that, there would be a slight surplus of $75,000. These are the counties for major property tax funds, the June 1st assessments, the July 1st assessments, and then the additional revenue that was generated from that between June 1st and July 1st, and we'll show you how that's been distributed. So here are the changes from, from June 1st. We did, in fiscal, this fiscal year, we did mid-year compensation adjustments to account for the inflationary period we're in. And we had put a forecast of $5 million in the budget for that. We reduced it by $1 million as we got a better number for that. Added $1 million to the tax collector to fund their budget. $4 million reduction of major maintenance to be paid from excess reserves, and I'll show you that in a later slide. About $400,000 of minor adjustments to constitutional budgets that came in after June 1st. $1.6 million increase for city CRAs. So that is, that's a function of the increase in the tax base for the, for the CRAs in the cities and the county's contribution to that. Added $1.8 million to, to the transfer from the general fund to transit fund. And I'll talk about that a little bit later, but that is because we are slowly each year increasing that, that subsidy that goes from the general fund to the transit fund. We lowered it quite a bit because through the CARES Act and American Rescue Plan, transit received about, all, all transit, all transit authorities and transits throughout the country received money to operate with during the pandemic. That money is running out, and we're having to then cycle back in county funds for that. And then transferred $2.6 million of revenues from the general fund to the unincorporated MSTU fund to balance the unincorporated MSTU fund.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Hannah has a question.
Real quickly, I wish I could work Sweet Home Alabama into my question, but I can't. If I could ad lib really well, I would be able to do that. When we talk about the, the 5% pay adjustment, what do we, what are we doing with the constitutionals in that pay adjustment?
The constitutionals have already submitted their increases with their budgets, they'd say submitted to the county and, and have incorporated that into their budgets.
Okay, so it's in there? Okay, thanks.
So this is the general fund, this is the countywide taxable tax base. And as you can see, this is the history, in 2022, 18.0% increase, 113.4 billion taxable property value. The, and then this shows the forecast from the, from the state, from the estimating conference at the state. They had forecast 10.4% for this year, it ended up being 18.08%. And then you can see the projections going out five years. You'll see later on, when I show you a forecast for both the general fund and the unincorporated MSTU, what we've done is, an assumption for those projections, is add 2% each year to those numbers, because we typically come in at least 2% higher than the state estimating conference. The estimating conference is meeting this week and is going to do another estimation of, of the ad valorem tax. So we should have something new.
Commissioner Wayne has a question.
So Pete, really, this is the first year that we actually, our taxable values really equaled 2007. I mean, last year, we were close, but this is really the first year that we're above the taxable values, correct?
That's correct.
So last year, when we adopted our budget, it was close, but we certainly adopted it with a lower, you know, we're, you know, we certainly, other municipalities, when I was in Sanibel, we'd already exceeded the taxable value. So we're above par, as you'd call it.
Yeah, we're finally back to pre-recession values.
Thanks.
Commissioner Greenwell, you're up.
So at this point, would this be a good time to talk about, is it possible, I know today, we voted on keeping the millage rate the same. Would it be possible to look into maybe lowering it some? That's something I would be interested in discussing, if possible.
Pete, Roger?
Commissioners, that's...
We want to go out of turn, or do you want to?
Beg your pardon?
We want to go out of turn. I don't know if Pete wants to continue down. I think that's a great point, Mike.
Yeah, Commissioners, yeah, we, that's a great question. You know, I've heard it from more than one of you, I think, in private conversations. And so when we get towards the end of this conversation, you know, if you would, y'all would pick that up and give us some, some instruction, and then we can, we can, we can do as instructed.
Okay, then briefly, continuation budget cost drivers, inflation, which is 9.1% through June, and you've seen this on a, on the, on all of your agendas, Commissioners, over the last year, just the increased costs for the materials that the, that the county operates with, supplies, chemicals for utilities, vendor contracts, all, all increases that we're experiencing. Growth, so we had, we are recommending approving new positions this year, heavily weighted toward transportation to maintain our road network with all the growth we've experienced. 164,000 residents in the past 11 years added to the, added to the county. So I expect this year, we'll be at 800,000 residents, and on any given day during season, you're well exceeding a million, a million people. That's not good.
Was that an explosion?
Well, I think they're doing, they're doing work on the building, plumbing up. Great presentation, Pete.
So Commissioners, the, the mics are hot. I think we're waiting for the IT to come back up. Oh, he's going to kill the mics. Okay.
There's no, I'm not sure if it's recording.
So we would not be recording at the moment.
Maintenance. So you have a use of excess reserves of 41.6 million. That leaves remaining reserves of almost 94 million or about a 16.1% reserve level.
Pete, I have a question. I know you probably uncovered this. I know in the past few months, we've talked about the increases or CIP because of the cost of material, labor, I think some of the projects, these road projects up 38%. I just want to give Commissioner Greenwell an update to what's happened in the last few months due to the cost of product, labor, the national level, what's happening on the global spectrum. We've seen a huge increase to our costs. To this budget, I know you're going to go through it more as we go through this process today. Is there taken in consideration for those increases of CIP projects without pushing the projects backwards as far as timetable?
Correct. So, you know, when we, when we're, when we're showing capital projects in the out years, we're adding in an escalator for that, those projects.
Have we seen a decrease a little bit in some of those costs? Some of the costs were really escalating in the first quarter of the year, the second quarter, but now they're starting to decrease a little bit. I mean, not just fuel costs, but material costs too. I mean, we talked about this one with the bridge costs going up, but I know things will continue to happen. Commissioner, when you talked a few months ago about what it's really going to look like a year or two from now with the recession, what this will look like globally. But I'm glad to see you working those numbers into this too, too, so we don't have projects later on that's going to be either stopped in their tracks or we have to slow them down a little bit because it's nice to have the influx of money to keep these projects on, on the drawing board. Mr. Ryan?
So Pete, a couple of questions and I'll clarify Commissioner Pendergrass's comments. So monetary policy certainly is impacting and raising interest rates. There was an article just in the Wall Street Journal that indicated that they're going to raise prime so much that in actually '23, they're going to start to cut it. You'll start to see the effects. Unfortunately, there's about a six-month lag when you have increases in prime before you actually see the slowdown of the impacts of it. But it's interesting to say that they're going to continue to increase, but in '23, it's certainly forecasted they're going to actually start to cut interest rates. So I think it'll have the effect. But Pete, a couple of direct questions. So the 237.4 million, I recognize it's a $25.7 million increase. Was that $10.1 million in sheriff's capital included in that overall 237?
No, it's not.
That's I thought. I just wanted for clarification. So not only was it a $25.7 million increase, but on top of that's another $10 million. So in total, about $35.8 million for the sheriff's department alone. Just wanted some clarity.
Yeah.
Great. The other thing that we talked about, and again, I think Commissioner Greenwell, we'll get to your conversation, but we talked last year as this budget continues to increase, you know, of capping our reserves, but you know, there was also a conversation of, you know, maybe $85 million would be a great cap. As we, 17%, as our budget continues to grow, that reserve is going to continue to grow. So last year, when I suggested we go to 17%, the conversation Roger and I and this board was having was as that budget grows, the 17% is going to grow. So are we better off with a flat line? Because at $85 million, which I think is more than adequate, we're $8,700,000 over. So there's a pathway, you know, I don't want to start this conversation, but there's a pathway to obviously lower the millage rate and there's some opportunities there. So you pay for what you do.
I have a thought too. Thanks Commissioner Ruane, too. Just, just along that line, Pete, on the slide right before, you showed us a $7.2 million increase in major maintenance. And then on, on the slide 13 there, another $4 million coming out, $4 million coming out of excess reserves for major maintenance. So that $4 million is on top of the 7.2 million increase?
Yeah. Yes, Commissioner. That, that number was, in June, was 28.5 million. I pulled $4 million out to pay from excess reserves to build capacity in the general fund.
Okay. You know, I guess, you know, the right, the, the way in my mind, I'm thinking to ask this question about could we reduce the millages, could you, could you show us a millage reduction and then show us how you'd accomplish it, you know? And, and I think there are maybe some opportunities there. Again, we're, we are seeing, like I said, a $7.2 million increase in major maintenance. Are some of those project, projects eligible to be funded with the excess reserves, that one-time money as opposed to recurring money? Same thing with the transit transfer, you know, I know that's always a sensitive hot button topic to talk about, but I mean, to go back 10 more, add $10 million back into that subsidy that we hadn't been doing for a couple of years, is now the time to have that conversation on if that's the right amount of subsidy? And could you ask them, how would you, how would you handle if we only gave you $7 million as opposed to $10 million as a subsidy? What would that look like? You know, I think that's kind of how I'm thinking to ask the question?
Yeah, I mean, along those lines, Mr. Sheriff, well, along those lines, I mean, one of the things that I was trying to do is propose some, and when Pete and I had a briefing, you know, maybe capping that overall reserve at $85 million, looking at a project or two that we know may be the furthest reach and not necessarily being obtained those. So it gives us some flexibility, obviously, and there was some opportunities to say, okay, great. You know, I want to see, with no doubt, since it's already baked into the budget, the 3.2 million, 5%. That's a, that's a given. If it's me, I'm going to basically forego a project. I'm certain in our conversations, Pete said he could look at that, you know, but give you a couple of different options, at least what's in my head, and say, okay, great, if we reduce reserves, because $85 million, we all said was more than adequate. So there's some capacity there. Look at, you know, maybe a project that, you know, just is far reaching. We always do that. In the 14 years when I was in Sanibel, we always had a carryover on capital projects. It was always our intention. But when you look at capital projects at 24 million, then you look at major maintenance, you look at other things, we're ambitious. But can we get them all done, you know, and is it better to forego those or forego one that we think is maybe out of reach? Some suggestions for some ideas. That's just my two cents, whatever it's worth.
I mean, for what it's worth too, I, you know, after being here for nearly nine years now, I haven't, we've seen like everything in those nine years from a global pandemic to a hurricane to a algae crisis to all of it. And we've, we've really never touched those general fund reserves to try to respond to those emergencies because other funds have come in to, to help handle that. I don't, I wouldn't lose any sleep if we brought our remaining reserves down to 85 million. I still think that's a really comfortable amount of money to have in reserves, but.
And I think, you know, and, and I appreciate that. I'm in the same way like Commissioner Hammond. I think we also have to recognize, this is Lee County's money.
Yeah.
I mean, again, so what's adequate reserves? Because when we have excess reserves, and I think they're necessary, but to a certain point where we make the policy decision to say, okay, that's adequate, we're all comfortable, we've kind of gone through all these situations, it still gives the opportunity to address Commissioner Greenwell's point that, you know, can we reduce the millage rate? Well, there's a way and you just pay for it. Go to the 85 million as you had indicated. You know, we have an opportunity to lower the millage rate.
I see. Okay.
Roger, you have anything?
If you're, do we want to go, go through the rest of this presentation or are you ready for me to sort of weigh in on that, that topic? Good. Commissioners, we, you know, the question comes up, you know, almost every year, can we reduce the millage rate? And, you know, the direct response is sure. You tell us that's what you want and we'll, we'll figure out a way to do it. The thing that we on the senior team always talk about during budget preparation is if we're going to reduce, if we're going to reduce spending, let's work hard to reduce spending in, in the areas of recurring, recurring expenses. If we go to capital or, you know, reserves, it's, it's, it's easy to do that, you know, for a couple of years, but then after that, you know, we, what we're subsidizing is the operation. Now, it can be, we can talk about, if there's a combination of those things where we reduce spending in the operation and then if we've got a reserve level at about $85 million, which I think is perfectly reasonable, we've had a lot of conversation about that internally. You know, we're, we're all comfortable with that, with that kind of a number. So it's a, you know, it's, it's a combination of those things. So if that's what you'd like for us to do today, if you, if you just tell us that's what you want and then we will come back to you with some recommendations for you to consider the, some combination of those things that we think will be sustainable.
Yeah, I'm certainly, I think that's great, Roger. I'm certainly supportive of that. I think the other opportunity is we're in this hyperinflation type of situations as we defer some projects and interest rates start to be cut, which that's going to happen next year. Most economists say that. We might actually be in the sweet spot where there's a project that right now we have an escalator X, where it may only be half of X. So there's some merits of not only coming up with adequate reserves, but then also some of the projects, you know, and having, this would be my 17th budget, I've always watched capital projects, just some of them be deferred. And it could be a combination to reduce the cost and/or whatever. But yeah, I think, you know, consensus, at least Commissioner Greenwell, Commissioner Hammond, myself, I think we're all comfortable and I know in prior workshops, both Commissioner Sandelli and, and Commissioner Pendergrass, we all talked about 85 million. We talked about that discussion last year. So I think we're comfortable, to your point, Commissioner Hammond. We've gone through every reserve. You guys have sat here for nine years. You've faced every tragedy imaginable.
Commissioners, I think, you know, one of the ways that we, we have to, we have to view all of this and everyone in the room understands that the increases in the budget this year are not based on increased service level. It's really based on demand-driven, right? So if you take EMS, for example, that's one of the easiest to, to talk about and understand. We run more and more calls every year and from one year to the next, they go up, they're sure not going down as, as population increases. So, so does the demand for service from EMS. And you get the same effect in some of the other departments. And so we are increasing our spending based on demand. The inflationary pressures that we're all feeling, which is one of the variables that, you know, may work itself out over the next couple of years. We'll, we'll kind of have to see how that goes. And then, of course, property values, how the, how the market goes from one year to the next. And those are just some of the variables that, that we will consider as we're talking about, you know, this conversation.
And when I say lower the millage rate, that's considered a rollback, right? Is that the term we should be using, rollback?
Well, no, rollback is a specific term in, in budgeting that says if we rolled the millage rate back, we would collect the exact number of dollars next year as we did this year.
At the new value of the, based upon the property.
It would be just reduction in those rate. Yes, sir.
I think, you know, in all fairness, Mike, before you got here, we recognized a number of years and across all municipalities, when property values were certainly going down, we didn't have the opportunity to give people raises. You know, when I was in Sanibel, six years. So you have salary compression as a result of it. So this board made an adjustment and there's a budget adjustment here. So it's already baked in. When you look at the increases, you know, part of the sheriff's $25 million is because that increase is already is in the budget. Not only the adjustment we made from 3% to 10%, but also the 5%. And all the other issues are there. So those are some of the factors we did recognize in that this was an opportunity to make some proper adjustments because we had the opportunity and we wanted to try to catch up. I used to say when I was in Sanibel, the pendulum has to swing both ways. You work with me when we don't have revenues and unfortunately you balance a budget and sometimes people aren't able to get raises. We now have, are in a possibility. So you walk into this budget where we've made some decisions, we've spent some money already that's going to have impacts to this budget. So I just want to, you know, some clarity if that helps.
Yeah, I'm totally supportive of the lower in the millage and also using some of the reserves. Also, still, when I, we've been saying it for years, like you said, using some of that reserve money as excess to complete some of the projects. This is going to create jobs, increase some infrastructure in the community, get back to the community. It's, I remember, you know, it's their money. So get it back in, it's going to create jobs and facilitate the parks and rec, what are the road projects, whatever it is, the need back in the community. So I definitely would support that though. But again, we have to also remember with the, with the huge increase we've been seeing with the constitutional and our employees, that's great, but in case there's ever a downturn in the future, those are reoccurring dollars we have to project for the future for costs for FICA, Medicare and FRS contributions. So the wages won't go down if the, if the income starts going down for the county. So hopefully not, we don't see that in the future like we had in '08, '09 and '10 again. So.
Yes, sir.
Ray?
We've been down a long road. We've faced a lot. Where I'm at, I'm a little conservative by nature. Okay? And where I'm wrestling with is the fact that yes, we are growing and that growth costs us more every year to do more. So we have this demand piece that we're trying to make and, you know, deliver the same services. The challenge I have is trying to get my arms around what the inflationary costs are. And so what is the inflationary cost going to do, which then says, okay, well, we're growth in here, we have this much more revenue, but is 85 million a number that's a stagnant number because it's not growing? And is, you know, we talk about capping that number and it may be the right number. That's where, that's where my conflict is. Try and match the growth with the inflationary pressures and say, okay, that, to me, it's not a stagnant number. And that's what I'm wrestling with, just so you know.
You know, I think, you know, just for conversation, maybe to think about, we left last year's budget at $85 million because the board acted within its means, did the various things we did and had revenues, obviously from a conservative budget, you know, be higher. We got excess reserves up to $135 million. So again, we're going to make a projection based on sales tax, we're going to make a projection on that, but we're also spending within our means. So the reason we have excess reserves, and Pete, if I'm saying anything that's inaccurate, please correct me, but it's a combination of revenues obviously exceeding our budget and expenses coming in lower than what we actually planned for. So, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner, but I mean, the 85 we left at last budget did go to $135 million. And that's where it grew to.
I, I think we're, we're living within our means. The problem is, you know, those means are changing from the outside, inflationary pressures. And that's, it goes back to the conflict I have. We're saying the budget, we're living within our means, but everything, I mean, I'll give you an example. My, where I live, you know, our budget, our budget is going to be up 20%. Big, fuel is doubling for fuel, so on and so forth. I can't control that. None of us can control that. You know, the clubs only open so many hours because they can't get the people and they have to pay more. So we can live within a budget, but sometimes the budget doesn't, you know, match up with the revenue. That's, that's my concern. So.
Pete, you want to go on?
All right, Commissioners, we'll move on now to the unincorporated MSTU because we have a, particularly one big budget in here and that's your Department of Transportation. As I showed you before with the general fund, this is, this is how the unincorporated MSTU revenues and expenses are split. And like I said before, transportation and community parks are a big part of, of this budget. That slide was out of order. I'll come back to that, Commissioners. So this is the unincorporated MSTU fund. Here are the budgets within that. And I'm just going to show you the cost drivers in that fund primarily. School, school resource officers up by $1 million. And the transfer for the Department of Transportation because of new positions and just increasing, significantly increasing costs from, from vendors and materials up four and a half million. And then the comp, the, the June inflationary adjustment, two and a half million. So those are the main cost drivers there.
Pete, sorry. The school resource officer, is that because of increase of schools or is that because we're covering the areas that weren't covered before by the cities?
It's, it's a combination of new schools and a couple of schools where their student population has gone over, I believe, 1,600. And so they have to add, they have to have two SROs instead of one.
The second body there? Okay. Thank you.
And this is your unincorporated MSTU. Good thing it's showing a surplus. We've, we've modeled in a 5% October 1st pay adjustment. You can see the adjusted surplus and reserves of about 10.8%. Keeping in that 10% range for the unincorporated MSTU is something that, that we've tried to do. All right, let me go back, Commissioners, to that slide that was out of order. So Commissioners, this is a projection, this is a five-year projection of the general fund. That's your 3.8623 millage rate. You can see revenues in orange and then the blue dotted line is your expenditures. So, you know, you want your revenues above your expenditures or very close to it and not to, your expenditures not to exceed that revenue line for any significant amount of time. Reserves, you alluded to the 16.1% this year. And then you can see what happens to those reserves as we project out. What I did is, the primary projection on revenues I did differently was I added 2% each year to state revenue estimating conference projection for, for property tax increase. You can see that it bumps up after '25, '26 because that is when our current general fund debt, which we're in a high debt environment, about $15 million of debt service each year, that debt goes away. Well, that will have matured, will have paid it all off. So after that, you'll see a bump up in reserves and revenues unless we, unless we issue some, some additional general fund debt, which is not on the plan right now, but, but it's always, you know, a possibility if there's And then here's the unincorporated MSTU projection with the revenue line, the expenditures line, and then reserves running there, moving up a little bit above 10% and then back down in the fifth year, right at about 10%. I'm not going to go in real detail on the, on the CIP plan. Commissioners are very, very aware of, of the projects in there that we, each year, whenever we add new projects, that's typically an outgrowth of a workshop that we have with the board. And the board's very familiar with the transportation end of the CIP as well as parks, public safety and, and the others. This just shows the funding source, main funding sources for these CIP projects are '22, '23 budgeted spend, about $258 million. And then the five-year total, which is, which is 1.2 billion. So it's, it's an aggressive spending plan.
Okay, Pete. Commissioners, and you have in front of you a spreadsheet that is marked Capital Improvement Program Detail Report fiscal year '23 through '27, 22 through '27. And in that, on those couple of spreadsheets, you'll see every capital project that we have planned and, and the proposed funding source as well.
And Commissioners, I did want to allude to one change that we made in the CIP from what we showed you in June, and that is burnt store road whitening from where it ends now to the, to the county line with, with Charlotte County. We added, we added a design for this project. It's a $23 million design in fiscal year '23, '24. Two million of that is a, is a state grant, 21 million surplus tolls. The reason we did this is that we've had discussions with the Florida Department of Transportation and they've indicated to us that if we could accelerate design on this project and essentially the PD&E on this project, there's a very good likelihood that we would receive a significant amount of construction funding from a federal infrastructure funds that flows through the Florida Department of Transportation. So we have the design in '23, '24. And then what we'll do is that project is in your second tier of, of, of transportation projects. We can move that into the, in the tier one and then program construction sometime in, in that five-year timeframe. So that, that's all good news.
Yeah, I couldn't be happier about that. Thank you. That's great news.
And then major maintenance, general fund major maintenance. And a lot of that major maintenance in the general fund is related to the age of some of our buildings, especially our constitutional complex downtown. There's a lot of repiping, a lot of HVAC, chillers for the county administration building, which is, you know, nearly 60 years old. So a lot of that's related to both county buildings and constitutional buildings to maintain their useful lives. And then all funds, you can see that. So upcoming, of course, we have the September 6 public budget hearing and the September 20 final public budget hearing. And we can have a August 16 final draft of the budget or we can come back with recommendations at the budget hearing September 6.
So Commissioners, I think the question for us is, you know, will we need an additional workshop to discuss some of these issues or do we go right to the public hearing and make those decisions then? So far, you've raised a couple of issues, one of which is the millage rate, of course, reserves. Are we going to set them as a, as a dollar amount versus a percentage? And then whether or not to apply a 5% increase October 1 to the compensation package.
So just for clarity from this Commissioner's point of view, I agree. We have in the budget that was presented to us, the 5% in all the other areas. So from this Commissioner's point of view, that's not up for discussion. That needs to take place. It'd be consistent in the organization and we've kind of said that. I agree with your capping of the reserves. I'd like to see some other opportunities, some things looked at from a project point of view to see if there are some opportunities to do that. I recognize that, you know, there's revenues and expenses we forecast. And I think you do the best job you possibly can. Our job right now is to get to '25, '26 because we have significant debt that drops off. Okay? And there'll be some opportunities. We're paying a lot of debt off and I commend this board, you guys have a lot of debt. And it's, there's light at the end of the tunnel. Having gone through that in Sanibel, certainly know what that is, to see that drop off. And we're going to have some freedom. So those are the directions I'd like to see because I think we can accomplish it all. Give us some suggestions, how to pay for it. But more importantly, you know, the reason I am so steadfast in the 5% is it's already in, you know, Pete's presentation. It's already in the sheriff's at 25 million. So let's be consistent throughout the entire organization and want to do that. So from this Commissioner's point, that's not for discussion. We're going to do this. And that's my two cents. We're able to do it and I wouldn't want to not see it done in the other parts of the organization unless not do here. So I want that to take place. As I'd always said, we're going to take care of people first. We're going to look at projects as something that we might have some discussion on, some leeway. We also believe in reserves because in all the years I've been doing this, I've never seen a city not live within its means. There's always a cap for adjustment. It always seems to be excess. We, as accountants growing up, we're conservative. Revenues, we basically understate. Expenses, we understate. And when they both come over, you have more revenue and you obviously have expenses because you live within our means. And we've done that. This board, happy to be part of the team. You've done that. And thank you.
Any other comments?
I would, I would agree, Commissioner Ruane. I think we, you know, if we're going to do the 5% on our side, I would agree with being equal and fair than with the constitutional employees as well, making sure that they, they get treated the same as ours. So that's something I agree on too. I, you know, my, I, I'm okay with having that August 16 workshop to discuss the things that we've asked for today so that we can look at those scenarios and review them and see what, what we want to do with that.
I am too. I'd love to see how it all washes out.
Commissioner Sandelli?
You and my colleagues on those things. Probably the biggest concern, and I have to go through the numbers again, some questions.
To me, one of the biggest, raising, raising, going to 5%, we've got that in. I'm okay with that. Challenge we have that sustains our economic base is housing. We've got some real challenges there. And so I need to go through here to make sure that are there dollars wherever they're coming from that can help us solve that problem, to help sustain the business we have, to help attract the business we have. People are hurting out there. And so what we can live within our budget is challenges to the budget. I think I agree in most part with that. But unless we can take care of the people from where they live, we got some trouble, we got some real problems. Every community does. So that's a priority for me.
Commissioner Greenwell, any comments?
Commissioner Ruane, I agree with you 100%. I think the 5% makes sense. And I'm glad I was able to, you were willing to open up the thought of the process and maybe you look in at the millage rate. And I appreciate that. I think that's for the good of our community and I appreciate the opportunity. But I'm basically 100% agreement with Brian and Evan.
Thank you. Anything else, Roger, on that one?
Yes, sir. So we'll have a, just a summary of what recommendation you all come with and we'll look at the 16. we'll look at the 16th, and we'll...
So I, yes, sir. Thank you. I consider the marching orders, August 16 workshop. We're going to leave 5% in the budget. We're going to establish a reserve of $85 million, and we'll work on some options for you to consider in lowering the military rate. Okay? We good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Well done.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioners.
Oops. I was getting ready to run.
Nice try, Roger.
So Commissioners, as you know, we receive gas tax from the state of Florida back to the local governments, and we are coming up to the end of a three-year agreement with the cities. If you, we go, if we take a look at the time prior to the existing agreement, that agreement had been in place for quite a long while, and every time a new city was created, whatever percent that city was supposed to get based on the formula at the time really came from the Lee County government pot of money. And so three years ago, you asked us to create an agreement with the cities that would allow for a transition period from the old agreement to what will now become a five-year agreement, and understanding that there would be some reductions to some of the cities. And we weren't sure how it was all going to turn out. It depends an awful lot on how many, how much gas tax is collected by the state and how much we get back. But we will show you today what that looks like and ask for your direction, please. Pete?
Thank you, Roger. So Commissioners, we, our local option gas taxes are 6 cents gas tax and a 5 cents gas tax, and that is, that's per gallon. It's not based on the price of gas. It's based on gallons. We had a, back in the late 80s and the early 90s, 30-year authorizations for those 5 and 6 cents. They didn't exactly coincide with each other. But we reauthorized the 6 cents in 2019 for 30 years, and what that allowed everyone to do was get back on a common methodology because Fort Myers and Sanibel and Cape Coral, to a lesser extent, had long-term deals that they struck. They basically struck 30-year deals. And so, as Roger said, as there were new incorporations that came out of the county's allocation, there wasn't a readjustment of the pie. So in 2019, the authorization came due. We had to reauthorize, and that allowed us to come up with a common methodology, which is basically 50% of the calculation of the weighted percentages based on population and 50% is based on lane miles. So that's a little bit of the history. In 2021, $36.6 million was collected in that 11 cents of local option gas taxes. The county share was $18.5 million and the city's $18.1 million. You can see what happened to the county's share for those 30 years. It dropped from about 64% all the way down to close to 47 and then started to bump back up in 2019 when we all got on a common methodology. Until then, every city had a different methodology for their gas tax. So it made it very difficult. They all came due at different times. And just real briefly, this is the fuel, your fuel taxes, federal 18.4 cents, state 13, a state that is shared with the local governments, and then you can see the local gas taxes. And then this is how that is split out for a little bit goes to transit, but almost all of it goes to transportation, and you can see what portions of transportation that goes to, whether it's DOT projects, capital projects, or operations and maintenance. One point I wanted to make here is in last month, in July, the county issued $100 million of bonds in order to complete the funding for the second phase of corkscrew road widening and then also the Alaco Road connector from Alaco Road up to State Road 82. And so our local option gas taxes, a portion of them is pledged now for 28 years for, to repay, to make debt payments. So this is what happened in 2019. We all got on a common methodology, and you can see what it was then. So in the, next to the last right-hand column, that was the current in 2019. So Fort Myers was collecting 14% had for many, many years. Sanibel, excuse me, 5% had for many, many years. And then the other cities in the county, you can see that if, at that time, with the allocation methodology of 50% lane miles and 50% population, Cape Coral was going to go up by a few percentages, Cape Coral by a few percentages, the other entity staying roughly the same, but Sanibel was going to drop to, and this column you'd be looking at here is the middle column, based on 50-50 split. Sanibel would be dropping from 5 to 1.42%. Fort Myers would be dropping from 14% to 8.25%. So those were big drops to adjust to and transition in one year. So Cape Coral and the county got together, and we said, okay, let's keep the methodology the same, 50% lane miles and 50% population. But both Cape Coral and Lee County will subsidize Fort Myers, Sanibel, and to a lesser extent, Fort Myers Beach for the three years of this term. So the county will subsidize 2.4% of its allocation, and Cape Coral will subsidize 2.4% of its allocation. So you can see, instead of going from 14 to 8.25, Fort Myers went to 10.67, Sanibel went to 3.5. That agreement ends at the end of this year. And back in 2019, the discussion was three years to transition for Sanibel and Fort Myers, and to a lesser extent, Fort Myers Beach. And then at that, we'll go to the pure formula, which is 50% lane miles, 50% population, no subsidies. So you can see the current right now is at the 27.29 for Cape Coral. That'd go up a couple of percentage to 29. Fort Myers had dropped from the subsidized 10.67 to 8.45, and Sanibel 3.5 to 1.35. And what the cities have discussed is they'd like to do a five-year agreement because three years, you're kind of constantly in the cycle of having to renegotiate these things. Sanibel and Fort Myers have raised concerns about the three-year transition and wanting to extend that. And then Commissioners, there are a couple ways that this gas tax distribution unfolds if there isn't an agreement. One is in the statute, the fallback calculation is your last five years, the average of your last five years of transportation expenses, capital and operations and maintenance. So you can see there, Lee County obviously has the highest spend for capital projects. Our percentage would go up by, you know, nearly, would go up by 17%. Cape Coral, and then the rest of the cities other than Sanibel would drop significantly below what they are today. The other method is if you, if cities that include the population of more than 50% of the incorporated area, if they agree to a methodology, then it can be imposed on all of the cities. So that is where we're at today, and we're just asking for board input on how you would like us to proceed. Roger, any other comments with that?
Commissioners, we, Pete said, and I think a good job of explaining the history of this distribution process and what's happened over the last few years. It's, you know, it's interesting because, I mean, nobody wants to see a reduction in revenue. I mean, everybody in the room who thinks that's a good idea, you know, raise your hand, and of course, no one ever does. The 50% lane mile, 50% population, in my mind, is a pretty fair, pretty fair settlement. When you take a look at the alternative, which is what kind of operating and maintenance expenses, transportation expenses have taken place over the last five years for each of the jurisdictions, that probably comes pretty close to telling you how much money is spent by each of the jurisdictions on transportation. That being the case, then that actually seems like a, you know, a very pragmatic distribution of the funds. Certainly, I know there, I can't imagine the cities wanting that, but just for the sake of thinking and analysis, you know, our recommendation is, you know, based on the 50% split between population and center lane miles.
I have a question. I have a question on Pete real quick. Pete, if I ask you, for example, someone's going to pick one out, city from ours. I know I get a lot of complaints from residents for their internal streets like off of McGregor, Virginia, Broadway, South Street, different, I'm just going through past complaints, West First Street currently, the condition of the roads. When the cities obtain this money, are they restricted? They can use it for maintenance of current roads? Because I know the past, the city had a history of spending their impact fee money for lawsuits with shoemaker and all that stuff. But what are they doing with this money when they get this gas tax funding? And once they get it, do they use it for other projects within the city, or they have to use it for transportation only? They also use it for bicycle paths because I don't see, from what I'm hearing, I don't know if Commissioner Hammond gets the calls from his district of, you know, from the city residents about the roads' conditions. Some of the roads have never been improved in 50 years. So what are they doing with the money when they get this gas tax and impact fee money, too?
It has to be used for transportation expenses, and
I know some of the staff
It can be used for sidewalks, it can be used for sidewalks and multi-use paths. I'm not sure if it, and I'll have to get back to Commissioner on whether it can...
So basically, they're making the priority either bicycle paths or transportation for cars or putting the bicycles.
Correct.
I know the one project they had, all the enhanced extension, they used some of that in grant money, other thing about other, the question we're getting, at least I'm getting from the residents is why is our roads, internal residential roads on the side streets off of 41, off of McGregor, off of Fowler, they serve, where's the money been at for these roads for the last 30, 40 years? So I just didn't know. Obviously, it's none of, you know, technically, we're not going to get involved with how they spend the money, but just trying to find an answer to tell these residents when they ask, why is their road, like Bremen or Virginia, still have the same holes that they've had in 30 years? It's just very frustrating when I know they're getting impact fee money, they're getting tax money, they're getting gas tax. I don't know, Commissioner Hammond, you get the complaints also from the residents through your district about that.
Well, I mean, I can tell you the experience specifically in my district related to North Cape Coral is if, it does, just drive into North Cape Coral, anybody can. If you drive north of Pine Island Road and look at the condition of the roads north of Pine Island Road, which is largely my district, and then you drive south of Pine Island Road and look at the condition of the roads, there is a huge disparity between the level of service that the citizens and residents of North Cape Coral get compared to South Cape Coral. And so I certainly would publicly advocate for money being spent on the road network and the transportation network in North Cape Coral for the residents in that very high-growth area. You know, yeah, I think you bring up great points, Commissioner Pendergrass, that, you know, when this money gets transferred, it really definitely should be going to the areas it's supposed to be going to, to improve the network.
Complete streets. I mean, the complete streets we all adopted 10 years ago, 5% of the project cost would be complete streets, the bicycle paths. So that's already incorporated. Instead of putting, are they putting 100% of the funding towards that, or are they putting 5% based upon what the policy is for complete streets? So that's, you know, obviously a question we can ask. So the respective cities that we're dealing with as far as the complaints, and I do forward those complaints to those council people, but, you know, as far as like what's going on with these roads.
You know, I'm certainly not trying to be disrespectful of the Cape City Council and how they send their money, spend their money, rather, but I mean, I could tell you as a resident of North Cape Coral, it is a real disparity when you go north of Pine Island Road versus south of Pine Island Road. And I think if I were to advocate for the residents up there in my district, we need more attention, absolutely.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if you, I know we don't have any control over their expenditure, their road projects, but like we do in Lehigh, where you're 5 million dollars above beyond what we do now for paving, trying to catch up with Lehigh. They could do something like that at Cape Coral. Commissioner Ruane?
Sure. So, you know, on the city side, transportation dollars go in the enterprise fund, whether it's tolls, whether it's gas tax, it goes in there. It all goes through audits. It all have people, I have Clifton Boston, so I can't move it over to the general fund and do whatever I want to do. Okay, I can assure you that's where it goes. And having management with them, that is where we are. I mean, the situation we're presented with, which is a known situation, okay, we have a chart in front of us, and basically the three people that will take a significant, although maybe only a small percentage for Fort Myers Beach, still 33% get it, Sanibel and Cape Coral. So my understanding, meaning of the territory, is that we would have to have an interlocal agreement signed by all parts. So, okay, what's the likely, there are three different cities, and obviously the characteristic, sign an interlocal agreement, they basically need revenue. So then really comes the page of imposing it. And basically, that's where we might prefer to go. So I think we could certainly get a local agreement to six cities.
Probably a challenge to have all six cities sign it. So we need to be prepared for what happens with that alternative, which is what the last page is, is imposing this. And that might be where we are, careful what you ask for, because then we also have interlocal agreement that we get to put together, and they're going to have to sign our interlocal agreement. So there's no good solution here, because I could tell you whether it's Commissioner Greenwell, yourself, myself, everyone's going to hear from somebody because at the end of the day, we're doing this. I appreciate the conversation you and I had some three years ago, because we had this conversation when I was the mayor of Sanibel and indicated this day was coming. I'm just being realistic that there's six cities that have to sign, and what happens if they don't? We're going to have to make a tough decision. And at least, from my understanding, we don't have many options.
Mr. Chairman?
Just, if I might, to summarize what Pete has already presented. In a nutshell, Commissioners, there are three ways under the statute to split the gas tax. The first is based on the five-year historical expenditure by jurisdiction. That's statutory, sometimes called the default standard. The manner in which Lee County and the municipalities have historically split gas tax revenue, and that is by unanimous agreement on an interlocal. And then there's the third, which is known as the imposed method. And that statutorily requires the county to negotiate or structure an interlocal agreement with a sufficient number of municipalities that represent more than 50% of the incorporated residents. And we call it the imposed manner because that obviously leaves some municipalities out of that discussion. However, they would be bound by the formula created by the county and those municipalities that satisfy the 50% threshold. So if we cannot come to a voluntary agreement, the BOCC does have two statutory routes to pursue. One is imposing pursuant to the statute based on the five-year historical expenditure, and the other is getting with a sufficient number of municipalities that represent 50% of the incorporated residents, and then that formula becomes binding on 100% of the municipalities, whether they're at the table or not.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is another way to kind of say what we're looking at here is, so this slate, the last slide that says local option gas tax distribution with transportation expenses that we're kind of referring to as the state formula, if you will, is another way to say this. So if you look at this state formula, where Lee County would be due 68%, I'm rounding, it's 67.96. But even in the current formula that we've been using, Lee County's only been getting 52.56%. Is it fair to say that Lee County's been giving away or distributing 15 cents of revenue that the state would say we should get to the cities? that the state would say we should get to the cities?
Commissioners, when, I'll take a shot at it from the legal perspective and then defer to your CFO. When you have a set pot of money that's distributed pursuant to a formula, one person's or one entity's increase in that revenue represents another entity's decrease.
Right.
So simple answer to your question, yes, the county has been subsidizing the municipalities for a number of years.
So, you know, I think in light of the fact that we've been subsidizing the municipalities for a number of years, hopefully, there could be some compromise here as we look at the new formula, and whatever that is. I can tell you, one, my first reaction, looking at some of the changes that were going to happen, where Sanibel was going to go down to 1.35%, that does seem extremely low, especially in light of their current allocation at 3.5, and the state formula saying they should be right around 3.5, too. So I think if there were an error in the formula as it's proposed, that kind of is highlighted by the fact that Sanibel doesn't seem to be close to the state, what the state would even recommend they get. So I mean, I think there's probably room for compromise and fine-tuning on the formula that we're putting out there, but I do think that in all of this, it should be recognized that the county's been pretty generous. We could certainly put that 15% to very good work. We've got a huge road network to maintain, so.
No argument from legal, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, I would just add that we have a fairly short period of time to get this wrapped up. Pete, when do we have to let Department of Revenue know?
October 1st.
Oh, there you go.
So have we circulated interlocal agreement to all the municipalities?
Yes.
Have we gotten any back?
Not yet.
Okay. We got one back?
I think, City Benita Springs?
Yeah. I haven't seen it. I'm not sure if they voted on that or not. They may have.
So...
We'll go with none.
We have none. It's August 2nd.
But Commissioners, I believe the cities are holding off because of the discussion about...
But if you look at the numbers, if I like the number, I'll sign it. If I don't, I'm not going to. I mean, that's the reality. I don't mean to be, you know, it's not humorous, and just, reality is reality. So I appreciate Richard's explanation, and it's very helpful. Commissioner Hammond, you're 100% correct. We have subsidized, and we're using a formula that obviously doesn't work. But realistically, to try to get six cities together to agree, okay, who's for taking a pay cut? Who's for taking an increase? I mean, the reality is, I think we're going to be at the last option of an imposing. I think that's where we're going to end up. And I'm not saying that's what I want to be, but we're going to have to have close communications with staff to say, have the interlocals come back? If they haven't, that option's not available to us. See, unless it's unanimous, we'll have to have a little deeper dive into what the imposition looks like, what's that interlocal look like, you know, and maybe that is enough of an influencing factor, where the municipalities look at option A and say, you know what, maybe I'll sign option A. I don't know. But I think that's the path we're going. I don't know that we can do anything today, other than you gave us clarity, and I think we have some options, and I think we've articulated those, and, you know, our county attorney's given us really where we are. I would say, give us close updates on what progress we made. I don't know that we, we look at consensus, and my first thing is, keep short tabs on the municipalities sign, and if they don't, let's work parallel path to understand what the imposition looks like and what the interlocal agreement looks like.
I understand what you're saying. You have six different municipalities, and you're right, who's going to take a pay cut, who's going to take an increase, but it also comes back to, we dealt with this, we first talked about this four, five years ago, with the sterile incorporating led to this conversation. You had an area that's got new roads, new infrastructure, and they wanted everything, and we're having a discussion with staff and with their newly-elected council, but they didn't really need anything, they didn't really want anything, because all the roads are new. So you take an area like North Cape Coral, as Commissioner Hammond said, roads have been there for 40, 50 years, they know been improved, so you're hoping those cities that don't really need the money would say, yeah, we could take this cut for a few years, while areas like North Cape needs it, or like in our case, Lehigh, we're trying, we're 60 years out there, paving for the next 60 years out there, trying to catch up. You know, and the areas of Benita, it's newer areas, and, you know, for Mars Beach, what roads do they have, other than what we do already on the sterile boulevard? So, you know, what are they really going to, that's when I came back to the conversation, what are they really using the money for? Are they actually using it for roads, or using it for bicycle improvement projects that's being pushed out within the community, or the actual transportation? Then bicycle based upon complete streets, the 5% of the budget. So that's, you know, my concern. When you actually have people, kids standing on the side of the road in Cape Coral, you know, on a road that's not getting paid, that's the problem.
You know, I think what Commissioner Hammond said is so paramount, is the impose really goes to how much money's been spent. And, you know, to your point, you know, and having governed for Sanibel, I mean, Sanibel has spent the appropriate money for them to have 3.5%. You know, your point about Cape Coral, when you look at what's spent, you know, you struggle, you know, and only that I know the transportation aspect, the enterprise so well, having come from a city, you know, it looks like you should be rewarded based on what you spent. I mean, that's where it's supposed to go. I mean, I don't mean to be callous, but you spend money, you get rewarded. You don't spend money, you know, that's the formula.
I have a question. So what happens if three sign, we don't? Then we don't have any option but to go to the final page, right? Would that be right?
Mr. Chairman? At that point, you would either default to the statutory five-year formula, or direct the county to negotiate with a sufficient number of municipalities that represent 50% of the incorporated population. That agreement would then become binding on all the municipalities.
Thank you.
So, and, Mr. Chairman, if I might, the purpose of my presentation is just to outline that, you know, at first blush, it seems as though the county's at the mercy of the six municipalities. Under the options that you have statutorily, it is a level playing field. So you do have options, and yes, while the county has in the past worked cooperatively with the municipalities to come to a seven-party agreement, if that does not come to fruition, you do have options.
It gets clarified. I think I know what we need to do, and I think you need to keep us suppressed, and, you know, I guess, I would say, you know, if there's something you want to add on to this workshop or a subsequent workshop, you know, to give us appropriate time, you know, maybe we have something, or you give us some update on the 16th to see, you know, what has transpired. I mean, I'm going to guess that we're going to walk down what Richard's articulated, and I think what's compelling is the amount of money that's spent.
And, I mean, I think we all want all the cities to be happy, and...
Absolutely.
Are you going to straighten, make it very happy? I would love to see a list of, for example, if you're all saying, yeah, over the next three years, even our CIP, we're going to pay 20 miles of northeast Cape, or something, or just sterile, Benita, Sanibel, these are our projects, for the next three years, we're going to use this money for this, and I would love to see that person, I don't know if they have that, something on Rogers, if you hear that from their county management, but something to show what they're actually spending the money for, it's a priority compared to a...
So I think it's fairly easy, Commissioners, I think it's fairly easy to get that information from each of the cities, how has the money been spent? So if I'm understanding correctly from this conversation, you'd like us to continue to negotiate, work with the cities, and see if we can't bring back something that makes sense, and if our ability to do that, then we go to one of the other two, one of the other two formulas that are available to us.
And what I like, you know, is the last chart. I mean, it's compelling, and that last chart says it all.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd love to hear what they're going to do tomorrow, but the proof is what you've spent today. Appreciate the direction.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Pete.
You got what you need?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now I'm going to run.
Me, too. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, we're adjourned.